Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the special call meeting of the Catawba City Council on Monday, May the 10th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Notice that this meeting's been sent out pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. It is being conducted by Zoom video teleconference. It is being livestreamed to YouTube for the general public. For members to participate in the meeting, your video must be turned on. Members must be seen and heard. We'll get started with the roll call to record attendees. Savannah, could you call the roll, please?
Kim?
Here.
Paige?
Here.
Skylar?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Mom?
Here.
And Sandy?
Here.
Okay, we have all six. A quorum has been established. I'll call the meeting to order. Would you stand with me while we say the pledge to the flag? Hope you can see it. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Nation of God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings. We ask for your guidance and wisdom to lead our city and our community. May all things we do and all decisions we make glorify you. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we'll get started with on our agenda. The first thing we have is the review of the minutes from April 2021 Catal City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the April 2021 minutes.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion's been made and seconded. We need a roll call. Savannah, could you call the roll, please?
Kim?
Aye.
Paige?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the April 2021 minutes are approved. Next item is the review of financial reports of April 2021. Is there a motion to approve the financial reports?
I make a motion to approve April 2021's financial reports.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. We need a roll call vote. Savannah, could you call the roll, please?
Kim?
Aye.
Paige?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
All ayes not opposed, the financial reports from April 2021 are approved. Our next item is old business, which is the second reading of ordinance number 04-12-12-12, the tall budget fiscal year 2021-2022. Is there a motion to hear the second reading?
I make a motion to hear the reading of the ordinance number 04-12-12-12. Did I say that right? Yes.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Savannah, is that ordinance number correct? Just wanted to double check that.
I have my last one in front of me. Do you, Savannah? Did one of those numbers be 21?
That's what I was thinking, and that's why I was kind of go back and look from last month.
That's what's listed on this paper here. But there
We need to double check first.
Yeah, I was gonna, I don't know if last I don't know if in last month we actually, if it had been assigned an ordinance number as of that time.
It should be 4-12-21-12.
Okay. All right. All right, so.
Do you want me to amend that?
Yeah, Sandy, if you would, just amend that to make a motion to motion for a second reading of that ordinance with a corrected number there.
Okay, I would like to amend that so that I can correct the number. It's the second reading of ordinance number 04-12-21-12, Catawba Budget Fiscal Year 2021 to 2022.
Okay, the motion has been made for the reading, to hear the second reading. Is there a second? Motion?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Savannah, could you call the roll, please?
Paige?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
I apologize for hitting that typo.
All ayes, a motion carries. Jay, could you read the ordinance, please?
Yes. City of Catawba, Kentucky, ordinance number 04-12-21-12. An ordinance adopting an annual budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Whereas, an annual budget proposal and message have been prepared and delivered to the legislative body. And whereas, the legislative body has reviewed such budget proposal and modifications have been made accordingly, now therefore be ordained by the City of Catawba, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending on June 30th, 2022 is adopted and set forth herein. Resources available: General Fund, $494,950; Fire Department Fund, $125,400; Street Fund, $13,297; Park Fund, $270,250; Gas Fund, $1,6,350; Water/Sewer Fund, $2,325,400; Appropriations, General Fund, $494,950; Fire Department Fund, $125,400; Street Fund, $13,297; Park Fund, $270,250; Gas Fund, $1,6,350; Water/Sewer Fund, $2,325,400. This ordinance shall become effective upon passage and publication. First reading, April 12th, 2021. Second reading, May 10th, 2021. Consideration, May 10th, 2021. Passage, May 10th, 2021. Publication, May 12th, 2021. Attest Savannah McLeod, City Clerk, City of Catawba, Kentucky, Barbara Campbell, Mayor, City of Catawba, Kentucky.
Thank you, Jay. Any discussion?
I will note, you know, I've received a call from a member of the community in regard to the amount of the budget, but and explained to them, I think satisfactorily, but this, you know, this seems to be a significant amount of money. But when you consider that almost half of this is past, what would be past through money or or grants for the sewer projects, you know, I think that totaled almost $2 million. So it somewhat, I guess, gives the appearance or gives the appearance or or inflates it to a certain degree. But the budget from the previous year is not that significant a difference, I don't think. And I just note that just for, I mean, I think everyone on the council knows that, but just in reference to the question that I had for that.
Anyone else have anything to add? On the budget? Okay, if there's not anything further, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance for 12/21/12, adopting an annual budget for the City of Catawba for fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Okay, a motion has been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And we need a roll call vote. Savannah, please.
Kim?
Aye.
Paige?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Okay, we have all ayes. The budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 is hereby adopted. All right, the next item of business is the new business, which is a resolution 21-01-Home Land or it's Homeland Security Project. And this is a grant that, let me just say, this is a grant that Jamie Green has been assisting our fire chief, Bill Compton, to get funding. Sorry. For a light tower for the fire department. And it needs reading to seek, so that she can seek application to submit the grant. And we need a motion to read in a second. If anyone would like to read that, hear the reading of that, please.
I'll make a motion to hear the reading.
Okay, a motion has been made. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion's been made and seconded, and we need a roll call vote, Savannah.
Kim?
Aye.
Paige?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Sandy?
Aye.
Okay, all ayes. Jay, could you read the resolution, please?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution for application for an administration of Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Projects, Resolution 21-01, City of Catawba. Resolution of the City of Catawba, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to make application for and upon approval to enter into an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, K-O-H-S, to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by K-O-H-S to facilitate and administer the project and to act as authorized correspondent for this project. This resolution also establishes procurement policy for any K-O-H-S approved project for their FY 2021 application cycle. Whereas, the City of Catawba, Kentucky desires to make an application for United States Department of Homeland Security and/or Commonwealth of Kentucky Funds for a project to be administered by Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. Whereas, it is recognized that an application for an approval of Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Funds impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon, this says the county, I'm reading it as it's presented, now therefore be it resolved on this blank day of blank 2021 by City of Catawba, Kentucky. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute and furnish all required documentation, including a memorandum of agreement, as may be required by K-O-H-S for the furtherance of the above referenced project and to act as the authorized correspondent for said project. For the purpose of any K-O-H-S funded projects using fiscal year 2021 funds, the county, it says county as written, will use the provisions of KRS 45A for the purchase of equipment and/or services. For any equipment and/or services under $30,000, three quotes will be obtained. For any equipment and/or services that exceed $30,000, the provisions of KRS 45A will apply. Done this blank day of blank 2021 on a motion made by blank and seconded by blank by Mayor Barbara Campbell. Attest City Clerk Savannah McLeod.
Thank you, Jay.
Savannah, just one quick question. And this maybe was a form probably provided to us on this. This may should read under the first or under the second, whereas it has a county reference there, and then also in the closing paragraph, it has a county reference. I think that should read city, unless this operationally operates differently. Is that your understanding of that, the way that reads Savannah, or should read?
I do believe, I got this from Jamie, and I tried to fix it up myself. Well, I can just make those corrections and send it on to them where it says county, say city.
Yeah, so there's two places on that, just where upon the, it should probably read city there, and then down that last thing. And I think that that would probably get it, just to make sure it's applicable to us.
Okay. I have one other technical question, Jay.
Yes.
Where it says this project, should that be defined? Or?
Yeah, I mean, I actually, so I'm not, I'm actually not familiar with this, with this grant program. And so I really don't know how the project is defined. Mayor, can you provide some guidance on that or directive on how the project actually, I guess, functions or is defined or anything?
Bill kind of brought this to Jamie himself and applied for it with Jamie. So all I know is that it's, it's for a light tower that he's applying for with the Homeland Security Department.
Is
I would just suggest that the name of the paperwork, the name of the grant that they filled out, that was all that needs to be described.
Okay.
Is there a cost associated with this to the city?
There will be some cost. It's like, I don't know what the split is, but it's a grant that will, if it's $5,000, we might have to pay 2,000, but I'm not sure what the split is.
And I will say, one thing that this, this resolution would simply do is it basically authorizes the mayor to make an application for. And so basically, the council would be providing the mayor with authority to execute and furnish any documentation for the program. So I think that would give the mayor authority to also, you know, review the program and that sort of thing. So this just basically provides her authority to act to do that.
I have a question, and, and maybe it's just because I'm thinking of some other things that we've had in the past, but that very second to the last sentence, for any equipment and/or services under $30,000, three quotes will be obtained. Usually, hasn't it been in the past that it has to be over $30,000? That we have to get quotes. Anything under, we don't have to get quotes. Or do I have that messed up with bids?
Well, the following line specifies what occurs if it's over 30,000. It's in accordance with the statutes, I think. And I would think that
Because it's a grant, it may have a special qualification that supersedes whatever the local state requirements are for bids, so that will have to be looked at if you want more clarification.
What exactly is a light tower? I'm not sure.
What was that? I'm sorry.
What exactly is this light, a light tower? I'm not, I'm not familiar. You know, whenever you go to festivals and they have the big lights for parking and whatnot? And or like a rec? For instance, if it's out at night, they would bring this light that cranks up. Like a generator type light fixture. Right.
Portable.
Yes.
Yes, it's a portable and it falls under like disaster relief light tower and stuff like that, so it's got different names.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the reading of the resolution 21-01?
Well, may I ask one more question? This, and this is directed towards Jay, I guess, but this resolution is simply authorizing the mayor to pursue the grant?
Yeah, the way that this is written and this is probably a kind of a form that gets circulated on these grants like this. But this is just authorizing the mayor to make an application for and if approved, enter into an agreement. So this does not, I don't think this is, it's written obligates us to make the application. It doesn't authorize us, or you know, it doesn't require us to enter into an agreement. It simply provides the mayor with authority to execute and furnish any documentation for the program. If, if the, you know, if the mayor was so inclined to do so, but that's basically what it's doing is it's providing the the mayor with authority to do that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm, you know, will vote in the affirmative, but I would suggest that if that perhaps for the next decisions that's made regarding this, if there is one, or things of the similar nature, that if it's the fire chief that's requesting some funds, perhaps fire chief be present to explain and answer any questions that would be might be more beneficial to us as a council, too. With that said, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution 21-01 for application and administration of, for Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Project.
Okay, a motion's been made. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion made and seconded, and we need a roll call vote, Savannah.
Paige?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Skylar?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, all ayes. The resolution number 21-01 is hereby adopted. And next on the agenda is the Catawba Tourism Annual Report, and we have our tourism director, Mary Sewell, to talk about that. Mary?
Hi, everybody. Savannah told me that you guys wanted an annual report, just basically wanted to know what I was working on. I did send her our current budget as it prints in prints from QuickBooks, but it does have to be amended for multiple reasons. We are not having live on the lawn this year. We I've been working since January to try and find an act that would be available within our budget to fit that event, and we had plans up until last week. And then that final act fell through, so since our, since that discussion, we have brought it to the mayor and to Savannah to consider allowing Catawba Tourism to take over Catawba Days, or formerly known as Catawba Harvest Festival, so that we can plan that event and hopefully find smaller talent for that two-day event to be held at the amphitheater. We're, we also decided in our last meeting to give $75,000 to the City of Catawba for Glen Park updates to assist with the grant that the city got approved for. We're also working on a visitor's guide. I actually just sent my final draft over today, so we, hopefully, we will have it, we'll have printed copies within the next month. I am working with Post 68, American Legion Post 68, with their baseball tournament that they do every year, also with Wildcat Bass. With their tournaments that they're doing this year, we have sponsored both of those two events. We're working with the Lakes Region Coalition on a bus tour. We have a bus tour coming through Catawba. They are planning to stop at Broadbent's. They are planning to stop in Old Catawba. And they're asking for someone to come onto the bus and give like a brief history of Old Catawba. What happened when the dam was built. Talk some about the old city. They plan on stopping in Hubies and Buzzard Rock and then going on their way. I'm trying to go through my list of things. We're working on our, I'm working on our fiscal year ending 22 budget now. So that, and I had it kind of lined out, and then the concert fell through, and then I had to, I have to work with Savannah to get numbers and ideas on Catawba Day. And we finished our financial review, fiscal year 18 and 19 financial reviews, and we're working on getting ready for our audit, because our income is under a certain amount. We have to be audited only every four years, so this is our fourth year in existence, so we're working on getting ready for our audit now. And I will be leaving for my second year of marketing college the third week of June. Those are the updates that I have. I'm sure you guys have questions about the budget versus, or the budget that I sent for the fiscal year ending 2021.
I've got a couple of comments. I think I commend the commission for looking to take over the Catawba Days and Harvest Festival. I think that's a super idea. And the donation to the Glen Park update, I think that's commendable. Um, and, um, the donation to the Glen Park, uh, update, I think that's commendable for the commission to do that as well, too.
Well, we had a, a tremendous year, and and our fiscal year isn't done yet. As you can see on the top line, we budgeted for a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And ten thousand of that was actually from, um, ticket sales from Live on the Lawn in the previous, uh, our previous event. So we only budgeted a restaurant, uh, revenue of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And as you can see, um, as, as of when I printed this, we had already uh, brought in one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, and I know a big part of that is because you guys passed that one percent um, increase in restaurant tax, so we're not able to have, um, Live on the Lawn this year. It's only there, and it was a unanimous vote. Everybody was like, yes, absolutely, let's do it, let's help the city and and give back, so.
What are some of the, of the big plans for the following year then? Because you will have a surplus, or perhaps will have a surplus from this year because of canceling a lot of things and not spending because of COVID.
Yes.
So what are some of the big plans that have been discussed for the following year?
Um, we are planning to start looking at talent summer to book for, uh, twenty twenty-two Live on the Lawn. Um, we were trying to work out, uh, the Warrior Challenge as well, the, the it was the Green Beret Challenge, the, the gentleman who started the Green Beret Challenge is no longer in business um, doing races. And the gentleman who came last year, he was part of Green Beret Challenge, but kinda branched off and did his own thing. I have been, I haven't been able to contact him. So I would like to, uh, bring Warrior Challenge back. I don't think we'll be able to do it in, in, uh, twenty twenty-one, but I do think it's possible for twenty twenty-two, and I would like to move it to the spring. So I'm not trying to plan two events less than thirty days apart. That is, it's incredibly hard, uh, very stressful, and Savannah knows, because I sit at her desk a lot, whenever in, when I'm in in planning mode. So it would be nice to be able to plan that for the spring, but I do have to find, um, another company to, uh, to work with. The plus side is the course is already built, they just have to map it and and make it theirs. The obstacles are already built for the course.
Mary, did you do handouts? And Savannah, did I not get one? Because I don't have a printout for what you're talking about. So did everybody else get one and I didn't? Is there one on the computer and I just didn't see it? Because Savannah always gives me.
I can email you one really quick if you want.
I don't know that I can pull it up while I'm in here, so it this is, that's okay. I just, seriously, she gave me the papers and I didn't realize that it was in there, so it's my bad if you emailed it to me. Um,
Yeah, I, I just sent out the, uh, the budget that Mary turned in.
Okay, so it's my bad, it's not yours. Um, and I just want to reiterate what Tom said about it's great with the seventy-five thousand, that gives us that much less that we have to try to get. So I appreciate that. And I wondered if there was, um, any, like, Christmas activities that y'all are gonna do this year. Hopefully, we can get together.
Well, I, I, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for Christmas in Catawba last year. Um, and we, we ended up giving that because we, we had to cancel Christmas in Catawba. We gave that fifteen thousand dollars, um, to the city. But as part of Christmas in Catawba, we actually, um, paid, we put fifty percent down on an ice skating rink for Christmas in Catawba last year, and um, she said that they had canceled. I mean, whenever I called to tell her that we had to cancel it, she said that it's, I mean, every event that they had scheduled, um, they, you know, everyone was calling to cancel, so, um, she said whenever we are ready to bring, whenever we want the ice skating rink back, then, uh, we just call them and we would pay the other fifty percent the day of the event. I actually have in, in boxes behind me, I don't think you can see them right there. Those are, um, snow machines for, for Christmas in Catawba. We got snow machines too. We wanted to make it very Christmasy and festive. So, um, I definitely would love to help work with Savannah and the mayor and and, uh, planning Christmas in Catawba.
Okay. Looking forward to it.
I need something to do. I feel like, I was just telling Savannah that the other day. I feel like, um, I, I need an event to work on. I've been helping everybody else with their stuff, and I'm like, I need something that's ours to do. But I will be going to school for a week, so that will draw my focus, and, um, I'm trying to work on, uh, Live on the Lawn and everything. At every turn, everything just kept falling through, so I'm happy that we get to work on Catawba Day. And we actually get to have a concert at the amphitheater. And I messaged, um, I don't, Savannah knows his name. I think his name is Tony, the gentleman who has the, the rides that, uh, we used for the twenty nineteen uh, Catawba Day. I emailed him this morning to ask for a list with details because I want to bring, I mean, the rides were a huge hit. So I want to bring the rides back, and I need to con, I need to ask the core, uh, several questions about what I, what we are allowed to do and what we are not allowed to do. Um, because I would like to make it big, very big. I want to, I want it to be a tourism draw too, and not just a, a local draw. I want to bring a lot of people here and show them really what Catawba has and what we can do.
Sounds really good. Getting anxious to to have those events again.
Me too. Me too.
Uh, thank you, Mary, for the report and the, uh, Tourism Commission for the seventy-five thou- thousand dollar donation. We really appreciate it.
I will also have, I will have, once I get my budget for the twenty twenty-two, uh, fiscal year ending twenty twenty-two, once I have that budget finished, I will bring it and give report on my plans for next year. Just, I mean, you know, uh, just last week, we, I brought up, can we do, uh, can tourism do Catawba Day? So I'm still trying to, uh, figure out everything as far as that is concerned. But once I get an idea, a grasp on, uh, everything that I need to do for Catawba Day, I will come back and give report to you guys on concrete plans for, uh, twenty twenty-two fiscal year.
Hey, thank you very much, Mary. Appreciate the report.
No problem.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, uh, we have, um, Bobby and Tad from KLC, um, Bobby Bryant and Tad Long. They're with the Community Development Services Center, and they are going to help discuss, uh, with us a plan for Catawba to move forward and help us with some ideas to, um, um, uh, to get some development done. Um, uh, council work plan. So, uh, with that, Bobby and Tad, I'm gonna let you all, um, take it over.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're so glad to be with you, uh, tonight, and we look forward to the day that we can meet in person as everybody is. But this is a great way to do it, uh, in the meantime, and, and we just appreciate being able to work with, with you, with, with all of our member cities. So, um, the, the mayor and Bobby and I have, have talked and and met, and we've talked about a number of things that Catawba has going on, and and Mayor thought that it'd be a great idea to come to a council meeting and sit down with you all and just talk a little bit about uh, the future of Catawba and, and wh- what we would like to try to accomplish out of this. We don't, we don't have a magic wand that can solve all problems, but we're pretty good listeners, and we can help develop strategies to help you get to where you want to go. And sometimes it's just a matter of sitting down and throwing the ideas that, that the council has out, out on the table, and trying to come up with some kind of priorities. And priorities are driven by a couple of things. One is, um, how passionate someone is about something and how quickly they want to get it done. And then the other driver is, are there funds available? And so those are two pretty big ones. So what we would like to do tonight, if it's okay, Mayor, you can help guide us with this too. Uh, we would just like to have, uh, uh, a brief discussion about, uh, the things that, what is that you value about Catawba? And, and we know some of the projects that are, that are on the table already, just from some informal discussions. But we would like to hear from you in terms of, um, what the opportunities are for Catawba and also some of the challenges, and, and we'll kind of arrange those things and and prioritize them. And if you'll, if you'll pardon Bobby and I, we're gonna, we're gonna type and talk and listen all at the same time. We're multi-talented that way. So if we're looking up at the sky, we're not, just, we're not ignoring you. We're looking at computer screens and trying to get all the notes down. Bobby, you want to talk just for a moment about where we are?
Um, just ready to get started with you guys. I have to tell you, the last time I was in town, I, for the first time, and I have been a Western Kentucky girl my whole life. I was born in Western Kentucky and, uh, still enjoy being home all the time. Uh, but I had never been to downtown or down into the, uh, old part of town until our last trip there, and I just so enjoyed seeing what a beautiful, beautiful community it is. So I, I know you all are proud of it and have every right to be. It's, it's just really lovely. Um, if you all will share, just, you know, top of mind with us, the things that you value about Catawba? Uh, we'll just jot those down real quick. If you all will just chime in and let us know, what are the things that really are important to you and that you value about the community?
Well, we had, um, you know, put, um, put some ideas together when you all met with us at the, the office, um, about a month ago, I guess. Uh, had a lot of good ideas, uh, a lot of things we'd like to see happen, uh, here in the city. Um, we want to kind of expand and, um, on the, um, what we have here, which is beautiful lakes area and, um, recreational area here. Um, we need, um, some revitalization done as far as, um, in the, um, town part. Uh, we have a few businesses. We haven't had any growth in a while as far as any businesses coming in. We'd love to see some new businesses, um, attracted here to maybe start growing. Um, we have a few vacant buildings, a few possibilities for, uh, um, businesses to, to, to come. Um, but we need, um, we're a small city, so as far as when funding is available, we're so small, we don't, we're at the bottom of the list, uh, for getting, uh, monies that's available. The larger cities get a lot of the money, you know, and, and that's understandable. They're a larger city, but we, um, have to really try to find where we're gonna get the money to, to, to do any of the projects that we want to do. Um, so.
Let me ask a question, Mayor, if I can. I don't mean to interrupt your thought on, on this, but, um, you know, vacant buildings and, and, um, downtown growth and those sorts of things are priorities for a lot of cities. And I'm just wondering, as, as we think through this process and, and what it is that you want to accomplish, have you created like an, an inventory, almost like something that a Realtor would do? What the vacant buildings are, how many square feet are in the buildings, what they've been used for in the past, what they could be used for, what kind of services do they have available in them? What would attract someone? You, you know, the kinds of questions that I'm asking are the same kinds of things that a business person would look at or, um, a, a person that was looking to, uh, you know, rehab their building so it would be economically feasible. Because the bottom line is, if it's not gonna make money, they're not gonna do it. So my, I guess, I guess that's a starting kind of point, and I'm just curious if y'all have, have done that and you have a list?
No, we do not, as far as I'm aware. Uh, something that would be beneficial, like you said, to, to start doing that and, and make that accessible to anyone wanting to locate here.
Okay.
Well, maybe.
That, that was just an idea to kind of get a sense of, of, you know, what has, ha- has anything been done to date on that? And what you're all thinking was on that? Does that sound like a good place to start, maybe?
Doesn't Amanda Davenport have something like that already in play?
Of our vacant lands.
Say that again, Savannah.
Uh, Amanda Davenport, uh, has our list of vacant lands that this, that Catawba Relocation has for sale. But probably not any of the, I mean, I've told her that that little gas station on the corner is for sale, but.
Okay, all right. Well, I didn't mean to interrupt that thought, but that's generally a pretty big one, you know? And, and just some immediate things can, can be done if, if, and I'm not saying that this is the responsibility of the mayor and the council, but, but, but uh, an inventory needs to be taken so that you know what it is that you're trying to market and sell.
I think a lot of our vacant properties, though, are sitting, just the owners do not want to sell, do not want to rent. You know, it's not like they're for big old sign on them and they're just advertised. It's like, it's precious to a lot of people, and so they're not, I mean, it's not like they're ready to be sold.
Sure. Well, and this is something that we can get more into detail with, uh, as you move forward, and these things take time. So I want to make sure Bobby and I both worked in downtown management in small towns. I come from a very small town, and some, sometimes it took, you know, a while to, to get people convinced that, you know, it would be to their benefit as well as the city's benefit, uh, to have something happen, those properties. But, you know, if, if there's not a, i- if there's not a list of what is available and who the owner is, then probably no contact is being made and no one is pe- when people get excited, a lot of times, and they see that there's interest in doing things, sometimes they'll get on board. So that's just, that's where I'm coming from on this. It was just an idea, Mayor, so that might be something we want to look at first.
Yes. I have been on, um, several meetings, uh, with her, um, Amanda Davenport, um, and told her that, you know, uh, we would love to have, show the city if there's anything that comes about that would be, uh, to our liking, that, you know, would fit here to be sure and, um, make that available to them, any businesses coming through, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like selling your house, if people don't know it's for sale, they don't know when to buy, you know? All right.
So going back to your original question, I'm Skylar Grief. I've been here for a while, um, living in the city of Oka-Tawa, New Oka-Tawa. Um, on the opposite, um, spectrum is, you know, the city was founded. Governor Anderson had this, uh, trees brought in that were not indigenous to the area, and we lost a lot of that in 'oh nine. So a lot of our image and heritage was about the wide street. Of course, you know, Governor Anderson envisioned, uh, you know, drew the town up in horse and buggy day, but our, we have a lot of property, wide streets, and a lot of land left for parks. Even the cemetery has a couple of parks built within it. So when you take that image with the parks and the nature and the trees, and then you add the lake, because the lake came along later, you know, it was a river town. So that is our image, and the sustainability to live here, we, we, I like it as a community. It's a great place to raise kids. You're, the location between Paducah and Clarksville and next to the interstate. It, it is a hidden gold mine that has just exploded in the last decade. So for those of us been here since the seventies, it's been a great place to live, and, and, you know, um, our infrastructure is taxed, as we know from the sewer plant. The sustainability of utilities has been a focus by the, this mayor and. sewer plant. The sustainability of utilities has been a focus by the, this mayor and her predecessor. And that's a good thing. Before there was stagnant growth or, or repairs in any of her utilities. And you guys are talking about growing and expanding, bringing people here. Before we get that far, we have got to somehow repair and bandage our utilities and infrastructures. You know, it's nice, a decade or so ago, we finally got trash pickup to where I didn't have to take it to the dump. Those little inconveniences for some of us, you know, it save a penny, but some people want to spend that money and have the trash come. So just look how simple that was. And that just happened in the last decade. So there's a lot of growth to do as far as infrastructure sustainability before we're growing our numbers and bringing businesses here. And I know businesses wanted, wanted to be here in the past and we lost them, probably due to some infrastructure that was, may have been missing. So there's still quite a bit all the way around to work on. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. What else? What are maybe some of the things that have been on the plate for a while and you haven't had funding available to do it? Or are there just really basic things in terms of quality of life that you know that, that people, you know, whether you have a town of 200 or you have a million, are there any basic things that people expect that Catawba might be lacking or might be able to improve?
Good wifi.
Internet.
The internet is a real problem. And if you've got people who want to even work from home, maybe they have a job someplace else, but they can work from home. This is not a good place for that. So we have to get that. And that's, that is, it's not just a Catawba problem. This is a statewide, a nationwide problem in a lot of, in a lot of ways. When we talk about infrastructure, I've taken a lot of your KLC classes, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks to both Mayor Campbell's and the, the, the things that I've taken from your classes are, and we have been doing that, what we have, beautify it. We put in the really pretty sign that is up front on, on the main road in New Catawba. Businesses have really stepped up to the plate and made their buildings in New Catawba look nice. The marina, Hubie's, that are, that, it's a very nice marina. He is really good about catering to the people that are coming in from, for the tourists. So, you know, those kinds of things have been happening. We're not just sitting idle, but there is so many other things like our firehouse was built in the sixties. And they are exploding with equipment. And, and so that's a major product, project. We don't have like a civic center, you know, someplace that, like a hall where people can get together out of the rain. If we are having some sort of get together, if it rains, it's canceled. So we need things like that. Um, we, you know, we're moving to get our, like they, like Skylar said, when Anderson did, did this town, it was for horse and buggy. People think that our streets are alleyways because they're so small. And, you know, I know that with the way that it is set up for the state, how they divide up the money for our road systems, quote, it's for the number of people who are using them. Basically, the problem with that for Catawba is we have a very small population, but in the summertime, we have a very large population because we have a lot of tourists coming in. We don't get credit for that. And so when it, we get peanuts when it comes to how much road money we get from the state. So, you know, it's like being on, if you, if you watch basketball here in the state, you have classes. I would suggest that maybe when you talk to people that are delving out the money for the roads, that we start doing it according to small little towns and bigger, instead of population for overall, because guess what? People in like Bowling Green and Lexington, they're always going to get the money. And us little guys, we don't get what we really could use, just saying.
Let me, let me ask a, a different kind of question along those lines. And that is something that I've learned just in the time that Bobby and I have been talking with the mayor and Savannah and some of you folks. There's a lot of things I didn't know about Catawba. And I still haven't been to Old Town and I don't know. I mean, she, Bobby sent me a slew of pictures like, oh my gosh, you will not believe this. Look at this. And so those are the kinds of things that help to make Catawba competitive in a global world. It used to be you just compete with those little towns around you. Now you're competing worldwide for people to come and see you. And they'll come if they have a reason to come. So my question comes down to this. When you talk about image and how the town was built and what it was built for, those things are a unique character. They provide a unique character for a place. My question is, how are you selling that image? Who are you telling it to? And are they hearing you? And the, the example I want to use, just from my own hometown, we did a little festival, people want, people love yard sales. So we did a citywide yard sale. We put it in newspapers up and down the interstates and US 27 and all the way out into, you know, Carlisle County. And we had 10,000 people show up because we told the story of what we were doing. And I learned a big lesson from that. And so my, my challenge to you would be to help craft Catawba story. What is the story that you want to tell? And this is not just tourism. This is quality of life. Why people would want to come to Catawba? I took a look at some pictures that Bobby sent me and instantly I want to come to Ocatawba. I want to see it for myself. I want to go down the lakes. I want to go see it. I want to see it. And so I'll just throw that out there as a different kind of conversation starter. Why would people want to come and see you and how are you telling your story?
I think that is where we need some help with. I mean, I think we do have a, a great place to offer and there are people who really do come in and enjoy it for, for the summer months, as well as those who live here full time. But I'm not sure that we are doing a very good job on determining how to sell it, who we're selling it to, and whether or not they're listening. And I, I think that's where we as a council and administration could probably use some assistance.
Well, you know, the great news, I mean, there's awful horrible things about the internet and social media, you know, but one of the great things is that you don't have to be rich to tell your story. And you don't have to be in an organization to tell your story. If you live in Catawba, you can tell the story. And so what I'm getting at is, you know, you kind of need to get on like a messaging campaign of these are the things we need to share about Catawba and invite people to our community. So that's kind of, when we're talking about strategies, those are some of the things that we'll be, we'll be looking at. And we want to be sure that, I mean, we don't know. Maybe, maybe you're doing some of these things and we just don't know. So.
I think a lot of our issue is we are packed during the summertime. I mean, we're at max capacity, you know, at summertime. But when we, when it dies off, October through, you know, the first of April, that's when we need these people. They just come in for the summer because they want to be here. They love it here. And we can get, if we had more room for people, I mean, they would be, they would be here and grow. But it's the off season where we have our issue, you know, we are a true summer. That's where we make our money. That's where we see the influx. I mean, you can't get a hotel room for the, in the weekends now, you know, and we need stuff, I guess, during the week too, to push them here to stay that Wednesday night, Thursday night, and not just Friday, Saturday and leave on Sunday. So I think what we need to be focusing on is in the summer months, Wednesday things, Thursday things to keep them here, pay for a couple extra days of, you know, of hotels and food and entertainment and whatnot. I don't, I don't see it as an issue, right? I mean, people love it and they're telling all their friends, especially go to the Barclay Lake. And I mean, everybody here on this can say that they see more people now than they've ever seen using our waterways and our lakes and eating, and doing things here. So that's, we, the word of mouth is out that Catawba is the place to be, but we need to use, utilize it all year round. Or the beginning of the week and not just, you know, Thursday night, Friday, Saturday, and then they, they like, for, you know, make it a more vacation place for week long rentals.
Well, let me ask you this question, because I've looked at your all's city boundaries and it's, and they're, they're really odd. Bobby, I finally figured it out. And I've, my question, my next question would be, do you have room to grow within the city? And if you don't, where should and could growth occur? And do you think that people would come and live there if they had, if they had a place to?
A hundred and 10%. But a lot of our area doesn't want to grow either.
Okay. That, that, that's fair. I mean, we sometimes reviewed as the folks coming in from the big city to tell little towns what they should do. And we're not that way. We're small town people too. My town.
But here's the other thing. What we have to offer is what they're trying to get away from. And so we really do need to be mindful of that. They come here for the individuality of the place. So to have a chain, like all the chains like everybody else does, that's not really what they're after. And they're also here for the, the, the easy living is, you know, the getting back to nature. So that's where the real catch 22 is that if we super expand, then we are not giving them what they want anymore. I, you know, I,
Oh, yeah, I get.
I don't know what the answer to that is, because we do need to have more businesses here to help facilitate the things that we need, you know, for the infrastructure. So you gotta have somebody who's going to pay for this stuff, basically. So you need to have businesses. But if you overdo it, then they're not going to really come because they can get that anywhere. So it's, like I said, to me, it's a catch 22. There's a fine line of where we walk for that.
Well, I appreciate that perspective. That, that's, that's really important to understand and for us to understand too. And I think I get it. I get what you're saying. Any other thoughts on, on that topic?
I'm sorry, but I have to leave the meeting early.
Okay, Skylar. Thank you for joining us. And listen, if you have anything that you want to share with us, you can certainly contact us or let the mayor or Savannah know if they know how to get in contact with us too. We appreciate you joining us.
Yes, sir. I will.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Skylar.
Any other thoughts from anyone else?
I will say that from our meeting, I did, I looked through some property as, as we spoke about maybe annexing and, and bringing in people that we could develop properties. I do have a list, I don't have it with me and it's just a real, just me just going through and like, yeah, that would be nice. So I have started that list of potential properties that could be developed and, and, and bring businesses. It was more of a business development block for Catawba. So I did work on that.
Right. Let me, if it's okay with you all, let me ask this question. So Bobby and I did some brainstorming just based upon what informal discussions we've had and our own observations and that sort of thing. And I wonder if it would be helpful, we, we'd kind of fleshed out three or four things that, that we, we heard, we kept hearing and that we saw. And if I just kind of go through those and you all help us to determine, one, are we on the right track? And then second, what did we leave out? What have we missed? Would that be okay with everybody? Because I'll make sure everybody gets a chance to say, speak their piece, so to speak. And we want to make sure that we've got it. Bobby, is that okay with you, mayor? Is that all right? Okay. So one of the things that we've heard and we've heard tonight again, is the, the infrastructure, the existing city services and managed growth. And so that's not just annexation. That goes to what you said, owner Sandy, you know, of, of maintaining the, the charm that Catawba has while also growing in a way that expands the, the tax base and, and the, the number of people who live in the community. Mayor, I also heard you when you said, the census numbers concern you and we haven't gotten those yet. And so we'll just have to see in terms of, of how that turns out. But things that come up, you know, numerous times are some kind of community facility, the fire station, the infrastructure, broadband and gas and sewage. And just the, the basic things. And then another area that we, we kind of caught on ourselves, but we heard from you, you all too, is the need to connect Old Catawba to New Catawba. And so I'll, I'll give you just an outsider's perspective. My, my impression of what Catawba was all about was shaped only by my drive from highway, whatever that is, it's 62 to City Hall. Not Old Catawba. I have not been to Old Catawba. So the, the, the ability for me to make an automatic connection of I need to go to Old Catawba is something that I see that's missing as an outsider. And that's not to be critical. I mean, I just think it's a thing like you live there. So maybe it's not as obvious. And so that's, that's something that's probably pretty easy to fix. But some other things we had heard is connecting by paths or trails or sidewalks or some kind of connections between old and new. Golf cart paths might even be something, you know, things to have so that people in the area can, can come and bring their goods to sell, such as farmer's market. I was glad to hear y'all talking about the harvest festival. That's really incredible that they've stepped up to try to help make that happen, maybe in a little bit different way, but still, those kinds of events unify cities and unify residents too. So I think those are on the right track. Another thing that we heard, and we've heard again, is improving the appearance of the community and preserving the unique character of Old Catawba. I saw a number of things in pictures and Bobby's seen this in, in person of some of the improvements that have been made that are really good. And there's, there's some more to do. But I think that from a business standpoint, getting a handle on the inventory and trying to identify the gaps in business, just basic businesses that Catawba needs, is a really key step that doesn't cost unless you bring an expensive consultant in. I think most people can sit down and take a look at what you have and then talk about what you need and then try to figure out how to get it. So that's, that's a, that's a step I think would be good. And parks and playgrounds, updating those. And then another area was encouraging new businesses and residents to locate in Catawba. And I'll go back to the, the comment, there's 3.2 million visitors to the area, you know, but Catawba does not want to lose its identity in the name of growth. So that's something that, you know, we need to look at and figure out. So I'm going to stop there and ask for your feedback. Is there, are, are we getting it? Are, are we hearing what you're saying? Is there anything that we've, we've lift off, lift off?
Well, I'll say we do have golf, golf cart connectivity to the old and new part of the town.
Okay.
We have a really We have a really good walking trail system and we have expanded on that in the past. And we are, have plans to expand on it in the past, uh, in the future. My comments were, um, previous to tonight was to have a walking trail. That would connect the. Two locales, you know, um, and that's very, that would be very challenging. But I know there are other cities, uh, in Calvert City who's. Um, constructed a trail that's tens of miles long, you know. So going over creeks and, and different things where bridges were built. So I don't think that that would be an impossibility. I'm not sure how you would go about. Starting that and I know that it would work with the Corps of Engineers on that. But, uh, we do have, we do have some of those things. We do have the farmer's market.
Okay.
I agree that we do need to look at what basic businesses do we want. But part of that problem is like Kim and some of the others have said. It's difficult for a business to come in here and operate for five or six months. And then, you know, five or six months be. No, or very little traffic, I guess, you know. So those, those are, but I, I mean, that doesn't mean that we can't do that and there should be ways to maybe do it. The other thing I wondered, two things, one is somehow we probably should get some public input into what, what's the community's thoughts on it. Um, and the, and the other thing is, and I'd be the first to admit, I'm guilty. I haven't looked at our comprehensive plan in, in forever. But you know, that addresses a lot of these issues, I think. It's what direction does your town go, what? Um, some of the infrastructure and, and all of those. So I think we probably would be a good start to look at what our comprehensive plan is to see if we need to. Um, revise that in any way as well.
Let me ask you a question about that. Does the city have its own planning commission? Are you part of a larger planning and zoning?
Or part of a larger with, with the city of Eddyville in Lion County.
Okay, so, um, the, the city. I, I, I want to look at, do you know, do you know the last time that Lion County had, went that, that all of you all updated the comprehensive plan? Do you know when that was by any chance?
Twenty seventeen.
I'm hoping, hoping it has, hoping within the last ten years because I think that's what the law stipulates, isn't it, Savannah?
We'll look that up. That, that'll help us.
Okay, I have, I, I don't know how, I'm just throwing this idea out here as a consumer. Um. I love a good grocery store. I mean, a good grocery store and. A big grocery store. And I mean, Food Giant is run by the sweetest people ever. You can't ask for nicer people to, to sell you groceries. Um, but for a big grocery store, you have to either go fifty miles away. To Paducah or you have to go to Walmart. And, you know, to me, that would be a draw. If we had. Us, you know, a big grocery store. Um, I don't know that, you know, I, I don't know if the sustainability is there. If that would bring other people from all the outlying areas, if that would be. Uh, but to me, I think it's a need and I know we have a brand new Dollar General store and they have groceries there. But it's not, it's not everything, you know, um. It's not like going to a big grocery store.
Would have to be much greater. I, I was a Kroger manager for years or they wouldn't even consider. You know, with our population, the way it is. Um, so I, I agree. I love a good grocery store. I love going to Murray, to Kroger. I drive that far, uh, no, all the time, but I don't, I don't see. I mean, and it goes, it's just one of those. You gotta have the population and then you don't want to grow, you know, we don't want to get too many people and it's just.
Yeah.
There's not a happy, happy medium.
Well, and, and it's not only that we don't have, um, the summer crew. But we lose a lot of our, I mean, we do have, uh, snowbirds. So that really depletes our population then in, in the winter time, at least for January and February.
And then, like you said, you mentioned Walmart. That's always a big draw too. They have not only groceries, but you know, other household items as well. Um, and you know, coming off I twenty-four, um, you know, that would be. Good stock here.
But that again is the land, we have all that, but it's not marketed to like push for. To be sold, you know, uh, on both sides of interstate. Uh, you know, it's kind, we're kind of locked for what we can get right there.
What else from anyone else? Any other comments that you want to be sure you share?
Uh, one thing I would like to say, the internet is a big thing. Um, it, I mean, it's huge thing. I feel like we're twenty years behind everybody else. Um, they thought they were doing infrastructure for internet year, years ago. And here we are and we're like, oh crap, we don't have the internet, you know, and we're losing and. Business opportunities that way, small business opportunities. I'm not talking about big businesses. Uh, but just the small pe- things. Um, we're losing people that can work from home. Um, they're not choosing a home here because they can't get reliable internet to do that. Um, so those, that's a huge thing. Um, I do know that the value of our homes inside New Katoa. Is gone up because of access to for golf carts. People are loving the, the option to drive their golf cart from New Katoa. To old Katoa to u- utilize the marina and the restaurants and stuff. And so they're, they're looking now into New Katoa to purchase. And the prices of those homes have went up tremendously, which it, it helps us out on tax, on, on revenue there. Um, so if we can keep adding new thing, new, new ways, trails, new. Whatever to connect it better, I'm all about doing that because they love that golf cart op- option. Because not everywhere around has it. I know Grand Rivers does, um, Calvert City does in certain areas. Edible does not. So we're one up on them on that. I know a lot of people were like, oh, I hate getting behind a golf cart at eighteen miles an hour. But the people doing it lo- I mean, they just love it. And so if we can continue to connect, um, that's gonna only help us grow in a. An area that we do have a little, we have room to grow and it's not necessarily right on the water where everybody wants to be, so.
And I think with that, we need, uh, trails for the golf carts and not where they're riding those. Uh, on the streets. Um, I think a lot of people are a little leery of that in itself. But I think, like you said, they, they enjoy the golf carts.
Well, and I think that there would be if like in, in New Katoa, if we had. Um, mom and pop stores that would cater to that whole. Seaside thing, um, of course, on a much smaller level. But like, if you've ever been to Destin, Florida, and I know we are not. In, in any way, the size of that, thank goodness. Um, but there is, there's these, um. Um, stores that they sell nothing but like, um. Swimming suits and stuff for the beach and. And I'm, I'm now, my mind is free- freeze up. I can't. Pardon me?
Height stores.
Yes, and there, I can't remember the name of them. I cannot re- remember. But there is literally one on every block. It's the same one. Um, and, and there, there are so many of them. They have the printed T-shirts and, you know, all of that kind of stuff. And I, you know, every time I see one, I think we need one of those in, in our town. This would be the perfect, but it wouldn't have to be as, I mean, this, these things are like two stories tall and they're a chain, obviously. But you know, if we had one of those, and I understand that it is. A seasonal kind of thing, but, um, Alvin's, Alvin's Island, that's it. Um, that, you know, that's, that's the thing and they. I would, I, if, if we had something similar to that. I'm going to hope that even if it was seasonal, they would sell enough. In the six months that we're open to then get by on the, on the, the bad months, the winter months. Or maybe they'd sell Christmas tree stuff. I don't know, but, um, you know, anyway, that's an idea.
Um, on, on, I think, I, I don't know if, I don't remember if it was with Bobby and Tad or if it was with Amanda or Deb Domke. Um, we could offer incentives to those businesses that. Um, we already have a few in place that it's not really typed up and, but it's just known. But we could offer as a city incentives for, um, discounts of other utilities. Whenever they're not in their tourist season. I know that we do like new businesses, we give them two years of tax free. So that's a incentive that we have for them. Um, there's just the ways, ways that we could look at, you know, we don't have business license either and we also don't. Do payroll taxes either. So that's something that we could, um, definitely highlight. To bring people here, uh, to Katoa.
Do we market, do we market any of that Savannah to, on our website, new businesses?
Um, no, but I have given all the information to Amanda, so she is aware of it. And that information also Deb has as well. And, and they are the, the two people that are supposed to be helping bring in businesses to Katoa. But they know that those are some, now we could offer more, um, but that's just up to the city. Uh, tap fees for gas is five hundred dollars, four hundred for your sewer. Then I think four hundred for your water. So if you wanted to do discount on your tap fees. Um, or, or, you know, there's, there's, there's things that we could offer them to grow us. Uh, but as far as the incentives that we do have in place, that they do know about it.
Savannah, would it be possible for you to send us a list of that? I'd like to see that myself. Cause I think you're, you're, you know. There's, there's gonna be some opportunities coming down the road too that I think you're gonna be able to package some things. And we need to know what they, you currently have.
Okay.
Be great.
Maybe doing a new, um, website redo, um, rehab with, um. More about the city itself, old and new Katoa. And things that we offer might be listing, um, profiling that on our website. Savannah does a good job on putting things that are happening and things going on. But as far as maybe, um. You know, telling what we have available here and maybe some of those things that we've discussed, uh, tonight.
Well, and I think it's really great that you all are going through this planning process because. I, I really hear what you're saying about wanting to protect the integrity or the uniqueness of what you have. And so you're gonna need to be kind of thoughtful about how you go forward. So that you can manage the growth and be prepared for it. I mean, the infrastructure is obviously, it's gonna have to be one of the first things. Um, and that's a big thing. It's a, a very big thing. But there are some smaller things that you can obviously be doing that will be a benefit and something that the local people will enjoy and benefit from. And that's where you need to start anyway is what, you know, what's benefiting the, the local taxpayers. Um, so I think you're on the right track of, of trying to really manage going forward. So that you're prepared for incremental growth.
Well, I certainly for myself, I, I, I like this line of thinking and discussion. Because, you know, Bobby is right that. Everything needs to be done from the perspective of what's, what makes it better for the people who put the bill and already live here. And what is it that we can do that makes their quality of life better? And then how do we market that as a tool to entice other people to come and stay longer than just the summer? So I think some of these things particularly, I, I really, um, kind of latched on to this thing about. Um. The mom and pop specialty kind of stores. And those, those are not necessarily seasonal stores. Those are kinds of shops that once, once we, everything gets opened back up, those are the kinds of places. That people will travel fifty and a hundred miles to shop at. And, uh, I think that that's, um, a way to increase the, the revenue streams. Uh, without selling out to big chain stores. And I'm not gonna lie, I mean, I gave up my battle against Walmart about thirty years ago. Uh, my hometown, we had, um, four Walmarts within fifteen miles of the city limits. But we couldn't get one. And, uh, so, you know, we just decided to go with local talent and what we had at home. And that worked out for us. Um, I think it's something that could possibly work for you all too. You all are, you have to, you have to market yourself as different. You know, you're not Paducah. You're not Murray. I don't think anybody there wants to be. So you need to offer the things that go with the kind of town that, and the kind of image that you're trying to project or. You know, what's really true to your all's values. So, I like this line of discussion. Um, but, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I was just gonna say the lake access in, in old Katoa and the. Uh, pavilion and the things that you all have that are, you know, so close to nature and so, I mean, it's just. Right there. I just, I really was just shocked when I was down in there. It was beautiful.
Yeah. Well, so, I mean, we, we are, we, we are here for the duration until you all are through talking. But I do want to mention how, kind of how we want, we plan to proceed and to make sure that this is on the page as well. So we'll put together a framework of the plan and send that back out to you for y'all to look at. We want to make sure that we're on the right trail, we're on the right track. If we've missed something, we want you to tell us. And we'll flesh it on out and add specific steps that we would use as recommendations. Um, and you all can, um, then take it from there and kind of prioritize. So we may, you, we, we may come back with fifty or a hundred recommendations. I mean, each one of these has its own specific set of steps that you can take. And it's not possible to do everything at once. So a next step will be to prioritize the things that are important to you and what do you have money available to do? Does that sound like a, a plan forward for everybody? Is everybody okay with that?
Sounds good to me. Um, what my next thing was going, I was going to say is, um. Uh, money and funding for a lot of the things, you know, that, that we need and want to do. Uh, we've gotten behind on our infrastructure the past years. We've been trying to improve and work on that. So we are having to set aside money to, and come up with money to pay for that. Uh, which leads me to what I was gonna say in my mayor's report, talk about the American, um, Rescue Plan Act. And monies that's gonna be coming available with that. Uh, we have a big meeting tomorrow, excuse me, with, um, uh, the, um. Um, KIA, pad and KIA to, uh, talk about the, uh, water and sewer projects and grants. And we're hoping, we do have, uh, uh, one of our engineers that has got together several projects to turn in for that. And hope that we can get, uh, those on the list that we can get grant money for, paid for, that we have to come out of. Um, you know, our, our money, our, our general fund that we're using, um, monies for. Um, also the, um, Recovery Act, uh, you know, we have. Um, gonna be getting guidance from the governor and Department of Local Government. Supposed to come today, probably tomorrow or sometime this week. I think KLC is having, um, a meeting to help guide us on what we can and can't spend that money for. So, um, we get, um, part of the money in June and then the rest of the money next year in June. So that's gonna help us out as well.
Yeah, Mayor, and those things are really important that, this is why. You know, I agree with Bobby, the timing on this for you. you know, I agree with Bobby, the timing on this for you all could not be better. Uh, not every community, and some have spent the COVID period planning. But a lot of this is gonna be one-time money. You get a one shot to fix something, to do something, to make something better. And having your ducks lined up in a row and knowing what matters and what's gonna make the most impact over the long haul is really important. And I think that you all have some very fundamental things that um, if you can take care of those, then you can you know, invest your other resources to things that are really um well, not as infrastructure related perhaps, and that could be marketing or trying to do some economic development incentives, or trying to to uh, you know, do some things that attract people to stay in your community if that's what you want to do. Uh, yes, the guidance was released today. I've not had a chance to go through it, it just came out, I was like it was this afternoon, they'll have a thing on it tomorrow. KLC is then gonna have a, a webinar, I hope you all will join us for that. Uh, K A E D, uh, who is one of our partners, is having a conference the seventeenth through the nineteenth that we're, we're working with them on. JD's gonna be talking about what you can use the money for and what you can't use the money for at that conference. And then I also wanted to invite you, we're doing uh ACE Conference in June, that's for um ABC administrators and uh code enforcement, and the third day for the first time, we're offering economic development. And um, so we have a really good lineup for that summit, that, that conference. And again, we're gonna be talking about the rescue and recovery money. Um, but we're also gonna be talking about um what small towns can do. So we're very excited about that and uh Bobby and I, we're kind of turning our attention more on the economic development side, because we have so many small cities that really need specialized help. And uh, so we're building a coalition of economic development partners, which includes the cabinet, K A E D. And, and um Murray State University was our first major partner on, on this initiative, so um, that's coming too. But you have opportunity, and I want to commend you all for getting that, trying to get ahead of the game, it's really, it's gonna be important, there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for those that are ready. We don't want, again, we don't want to cut anybody's time short, we want to spend as much time as you need us to spend and, and and I'm, I'm here till midnight if you need me, but I know time is precious too, is, is there anything that we've left out or that you wanted to say, or we didn't go far enough, or we didn't ask a right question, is there anything at all?
I don't have anything else, just thanks, and you've been very helpful, both of you, and um certainly appreciate it.
Well, thank you all, we'll get this turned around and get something out to you to, to start looking at. And uh, then we'll try to finalize uh our recommendations back to you so that you've got plan in hand, this is what we're about, and this is what we're gonna do. And uh, we'll go from there, does that sound like a winner for everybody? Bobby, did I leave anything in? Bobby, Bobby, you tried to hurt on me, you should have said.
No, I think we're good, I just appreciate you all having us tonight and um we'll get back with you in a few, uh, week, ten days, a couple of weeks um with the framework, and then that will help you to sort of begin to really start processing and make sure that we're on, our biggest things, we don't want to leave something out. So if you think of something that we've missed tonight, be sure and get back with us.
Yeah, I hope this is helpful as you all start hearing some of the stuff about the American Care Rescue Plan. That you can be thinking, yeah, we talked, that, 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 I wonder how we could use that in Catawba, that, that's on our plan, and so I hope that, that it's really good timing, so thank you all again for your hospitality. And uh, if it's okay with you all, we will bow out, is that all right?
Yes, thank you very much Bobby and Tad, we really appreciate it.
Yes. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, um I guess next on the agenda is my mayor's report, and we've covered a lot of territory just in discussion and, and talking um just now, so the, about the only thing that I would add is that we are opened, uh, we opened up City Hall, May the third to the public, so and anyone can come inside, we do ask that you still wear your face mask when you come in the front door, and hopefully um, you know, maybe by the, another month, um, that might get better and we may not have to do that, I don't know. We're gonna try our best to uh plan on having the meeting next month in person there at City Hall. That is our plan, so um, it's hoping that we can do that, so. Um, that is all I have on my report, does um, any of the council members have anything to report?
We are less than a month away from the tall cannonball run. And um, I've been watching how many has uh signed up. And where they have already surpassed last year, and um they expect even more to show up and register the last few days before, so uh, there's, I already know that there's no open rooms or anything like that in our area. Um, and they were booked out months ago, so um, just for those that don't know, it's gonna be next month, so don't plan on eating out anywhere uh Thursday night.
How many do they have um signed up already?
I think it was, I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I think it was like a hundred and something, so I mean, and I think, and I think they were wanting like one seventy, I think, so that's a lot of people, and usually there's multiple people per boat and, and whatnot, so I don't know if they are bringing in food trucks, I don't, have not heard the plan yet on that like they did last year. Uh, but I expect Wednesday through Sunday to be very big in our area.
Good.
And what's the dates for that, Kim?
Uh, the first weekend, weekend in June.
Okay.
Fifth, sixth, is that, I think that's right.
First weekend?
Yeah, Friday's the, they usually split it a short run and a long run. Um, so they'll hit Friday usually Eddie Creek, Fraser Point. Um, and then Hubie's, and then Saturday be the long run down to um Pa- uh Tennessee and hit Moors and then come back.
I got a question. And I don't know, Kim, if this, if it's for you or for the mayor, um to reiterate it, the, the new pad and the um uh basketball hoops look really good. However, the slide and the swings, you know how when you paint a room and then the rooms next to it start looking like they need to be fixed? Well, the swing and the slides down there are looking kind of bad, and so, so.
The mayor and Savannah and I, we've talked about, and I actually showed my little boy the playground book. Um, getting his opinion as a child on what could possibly uh we can add down there to.
Well, I didn't know if we, I know we had talked about moving some stuff from Glen Park down here. I didn't know if swing and slide was in that equation, or if do, can we at least throw some, i- i- in the midterm, can we throw some paint on the ones that are down there so that they don't look so bad? Um, you know, it, it does, now that it looks so good, they really stick out like a sore thumb, so.
Something that we discussed too Savannah and I and the mayor is that we bought those goals so that all age groups could participate, um, they are adjustable. But we cannot leave the adjustable thing on there, two reasons, number one, it'll be stolen, number two, um some young boys are gonna go down there, roll them down, and then have Dunk Fest on them, and then it's not gonna last us very long. So we've gotta come up with some kind of solution um where the ones that in, in the neighborhoods that are little um can have access to lower it down. Um, after o- hours, you know, um, if the city hall's not open. I mean, right now, you know, they can call and be like, hey, can we get it in, in, crank it down? Um, but we need to make sure that it gets cranked back up and, and whatnot, so we need to think of an access um for those little ones in the neighborhood that's gonna use it a lot, that want it shorter where people can't ruin them for us.
Yeah.
That's something, I, I don't know, I thought about like a um oh, uh, like the book box in front of there, you know, but having something like that, that's, has a lock on it and possibly um the ones in the neighborhood that would use it have the access to the lock code, and then we change it every month or so. Uh, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but we need to do something, so um, like the Congress. Um, they donated a good chunk of money to, to, to that so their kids could use it, but then they can't really use it because it's still ten foot.
Yeah.
I think, I think uh, you're right, if you had some type of code lock or something that could be um shared with the, with the youth that are gonna be using it, you know, um and as long as.
I just don't wanna be the keeper, okay? I love everybody, but I don't wanna be the keeper.
Okay, but here's the thing, when you go to, on vacation and they have the code that you press in, like if you rent a house. You know, you got, that changes every single time, so that um every time, like, like if you do it for a, you have the house for a week. They change the code so that um the people that come in after you, they get a different code to pop in. If, you're gonna kill me Savannah, but if we had that kind of a code to get into the box if you're gonna use it that day, you can call City Hall and say I need to get the, the mechanism, can I have the code for today? And then after that day, that are, you know, as soon as they're, they have to call for the code, is what I'm trying to say. And so, once they've used it if they're gonna use it maybe three days from now, they still have to call in for the different, uh, uh, cause the code is gonna be different. Does that make sense? You know, they do that on houses when you rent.
Yeah, most of them have pay a subscription, and those are, like Airbnbs that have those are like a hundred bucks a month. You know, it comes into pretty expensive, you know, fees and whatnot, and somebody's gotta be in charge of it, and then gotta make sure they don't lock they put it back.
Back, yeah.
Kind of.
I think the sheriff's office could arrange it.
We can just have uh, come and unlock it every time somebody.
Yeah. I was just seeing if you were awake, Sheriff, I'm sorry.
I'm watching a ballgame and listening to you all at the same time, but yes, sir, I got it.
Kim, I don't know what this.
You, you declared that you will be the one to unlock the goal, anybody, time, anybody wants to play?
We might need to renegotiate that contract, but yes ma'am, we could, we could work something out.
Anyone else have anything? Sheriff, did you have anything you wanted to uh talk about?
No, no ma'am, we're um, we're, we've been extremely busy in March and April um for Catawba's park, that's, that's mainly around the exit forty area, but uh uh, we um, we're at your service, if you all need anything, please let us know and, and we'll be happy to help in any way. We did get the title for the new truck that you all are, are getting. Uh, so we just need uh somebody to come down someday, we'll transfer it. Uh, bring your insurance card and you're, you're ready to drive uh, drive your new truck uh back to the city.
Brent, did we get that place cleaned up that had the, the dump site, has that gotten cleaned up yet?
I, I'll defer to the mayor on that, but I did hook the mayor and Judge Executive up, and I think they were trying to work out an agreement to uh kind of split it up. Um, Madam Mayor, do you, did you have any further on that?
From uh Watt, uh, I talked with uh Judge Watt last, we were going to wait until summertime when a lot of their work was, you know, slowing down a little bit. And maybe their guys, the uh county guys, and, and then our city um employees too, um, street employees, to get together and, and clean that up and, and not have as much expense as to going through the grant that, uh, going through a grant, it was going to um, take a, a lot more money to do, do the work with. So I think we're just gonna, going to kind of share the, the workload and uh, and do it that way, I suppose, it will be sometime this summer, what I can understand, so.
Mayor, do you, I've noticed the electronic uh speed signs on either end of coming into Catawba. Are there plans for roadwork, or is that just for speed control?
I think it's speed control.
I actually can address that if that's okay. Uh, I asked for that uh mainly because uh we're trying to get people that come to the area from the months of May to September uh back oriented to that uh restricted speed zone, you recall, we did that uh for the golf carts, to be able to connect Old Catawba to New Catawba, and so some people uh we still need to educate about that, they're not taking down lots of plate numbers or anything like that, it's just uh public awareness uh in that uh, in that stretch between uh Stubbs Road all the way to the Spring subdivision, just to, just to educate people and slow them down. We have had some complaints in Old Catawba, when you come past Christian Care and top that hill uh there by the Congress coming down, and we thought with the new uh added work uh that was done to the park there, and we would have more kids walking probably to to utilize that, it'd probably be a good idea to do that now to slow people down.
We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, also, not just in that area, but in, in front of the park. Sometimes they fly through here, I mean, I'm ready for them to go airborne, cause they are going so fast. So I appreciate it too.
No, no problem, and as we get closer to the holiday weekend, we will put that, uh, it will be back on our extra patrol uh list. Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, we have dedicated patrols uh just to Old Catawba uh and New Catawba from the Papa Creek Boat Ramp all the way over to the Catawba Springs or the Lion County Boat Ramp there. Uh, is part of a dedicated patrol route, so uh you should see an increased presence from our office and, and through that area, uh now through the end of September.
Brent, just for heads up, early morning is really bad.
Is it uh workers, I'm assuming, going to various businesses? Yeah, we can uh, we can.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing.
We can modify our, uh, we can modify our schedule and see what we can do with uh, with some of that and, and try to uh, try to get them slowed down.
Um, I don't really have anything to add, I will say that Bill has jumped on here just to kind of discuss the resolution, and I apologize, um, I didn't send him the link to jump on uh to discuss this, so that's my fault, I thought it would have just went on, so he's here to address any questions that you have um regarding the resolution.
Hello, Bill.
Howdy folks, how are y'all tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good deal. I'm doing good, doing well, thanks for asking.
Bill, might just explain what it is and, and what you're intended to use it for, and hi, by the way.
Howdy, howdy. Yes, um, what it is, is it's a light tower, uh, you all probably see these um uh frequently construction sites, um, around here probably the places where we've used them most was uh Live on the Lawn. Uh, where the cities had to rent it, uh rent them up there as well, and we've also used some for the Harvest Festival in Old Catawba, but um, the fire department has actually been in a position unfortunately on numerous occasions where we needed additional lighting on emergency scenes that um that was greater than what we have on the apparatus to provide, we have some scene lighting on the apparatus. But the thing about it is, our apparatus are pretty well limited to hard surface areas, you know, it's gonna have to be on asphalt, concrete, so on and so forth. We've actually had some uh, some scenes where we've needed to have lighting uh far removed from hard surface uh driveways and streets. And this light tower will fit that need. Uh, we've had, you know, one good example, and, and we could have got it back there with an ATV or four-wheel drive truck, but uh uh, you know, the plane crash a few, few years ago with. But uh, uh, you know, the plane crash a few, few years ago with Miss Saylor. Uh, uh, where she was the only survivor. That is something that would have been extremely handy then. Uh, we've had some uh, uh accidents on the interstate. We've also had some issues here uh within the city limits proper after hours in, in the dark where light towers would have been extremely handy. Um, obviously, the fire department is applying for it, but it's a resource that would be available to the city as a whole and our other mutual aid partners. Uh, Mayor Campbell, so Savannah can speak to the fact that we've had some of the city workers out working on water main breaks and things like that at night and flashlight and headlights from the pickup trucks. A lot of times in those holes don't work real well. So uh, it would be an additional asset that the city had that I think would be extremely beneficial. Um, we could have gone with a smaller unit. Uh, however, in light of some of the circumstances that we've had to deal with in the past uh where we could have deployed a unit like this, uh, I felt it was probably better there's go on and get a larger unit. And uh, the unit uh cost was uh twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and our share was going to be, we proposed ten percent, so two thousand and ninety-five dollars. Uh, it's a forehead, uh, a forehead LED lamp unit. So it's gonna be more efficient than some of the metal halide units that you see out there. Um, uh, they um sometimes the areas, they may light a little bit better with the metal halide, but the problem is, is they consume energy uh quite a bit. Uh, your runtime for the unit, your diesel fuel consumption is greater. So we thought overall, the LED units would probably serve us far better, give us longer runtime, wouldn't have to full, fuel up the unit as well. The other reason I went with the larger unit was because it had a larger gen set in it. And so not only would be, be in a position to be able to provide uh lighting where we needed it, but if something was to occur where we needed some supplemental power, uh, you know, heavens to bet you another ice storm where we had to set up a command post or something like that. And we needed to have power for communications or whatever it may be. Whatever the need was, the unit is large enough to be able to accommodate some of the power needs well above the lighting. That was another reason to go with the LED lighting because the LEDs consume so much less power than the uh, the other type bulbs, the metal halide. This particular unit will have three thirty amp four-pronged outlets. It'll have one fifty amp, two hundred and forty volt outlet. And it will have two standard hundred ten GFI uh receptacles on it. So uh, if we're lucky enough to be awarded it, uh, I think it'll prove extremely beneficial and useful for the city as a whole.
The ninety percent, ten percent is a pretty good investment, I would think.
Absolutely.
Any idea on, I mean, what's the, the possibility of that uh going through or being accepted?
Well, I'll tell you, little Lion County has, has done really, really fairly well on grants. Jamie Green's done a good job on grant writing. Uh, we've worked on several projects together. Uh, helped Jamie with the narratives on them. We've got a real good success rate. Uh, there's not been many grants that we've asked for that we've been denied on. Um, and we typically try not to ask for frivolous items. Uh, you'll see in a lot of these grant submissions that uh uh people kind of go off on the deep end on what they, what they're asking for. And sometimes they're not uh essentials, they're nice to haves. And uh, this is something across the board that uh would have served its purpose on many occasions, on incidents that uh the fire department, as well as our city workers, have been involved in. So I feel pretty positive about it. The office home security is always more receptive to where they see that a entity who's applying has the ability to be able to try to step up and help some with, with matching funds. So I, I think uh ten percent match was, was a, a reasonable, uh, a reasonable amount. So I, I feel pretty good about it.
Sounds like a good grant. Appreciate you doing that, Bill.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with that.
Anybody else have any other questions?
No, just thanks for telling us all about it. Appreciate it.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, Caterpillar Engine, the unit is made by Allman Brothers. Okay, I'll defer back to you all.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, does anyone else have anything further they want to add? Hey, we've had a real productive meeting, I think. Um, if there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I motion. Okay, motion made. Uh, we need a roll call vote, Savannah.
Um, Kim?
Hi.
Paige?
Hi.
Michael? Your mic.
Hi.
Um, Sandy?
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Okay, yeah, as have it. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see everybody.